I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its whole, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. We have a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st, 2017. We have a motion to second any discussion on the minutes. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and dispersment of the funds. We have a motion to approve the financial report and dispersment of funds.
Lou.
We have a motion to second any discussion on any of the bills that we're looking at. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Lou, you were on.
Okay. Sorry, I paper locked the mic. This is so engine, you know, sometimes we paper lock in the heat.
That's correct.
The ordinance 7, 2017, uh, been amended in a number of ways, but principally under the major facility charges.
Can't be a little.
The pa- The ordinance 7, 2017 amends the major facility charges for new residential, new commercial development, and for the period September 1st, 17 through August 31st, 2019, a two-year period. As it's written, uh, it approved, it weighs major facilities for unapproved building lots within reported subdivisions, residential subdivisions, and unapproved commercial lots. However, I believe the board wants to amend that language, and if so, I need to know what you want to do, and then we can change it and present it for adoption on the next meeting and with those amendments.
One of the things that I brought up to Louis this evening, and, uh, I had a question whether this would include a existing residence, and if they wanted to add an additional bathroom into their home or into their garage, would we be able to relax the major facility fee on that also? Now, the question came up is whether we charge a hookup fee for adding a bathroom into a garage or into the house, and I am ninety-nine percent sure that we do, it's based on fixtures. So, my comment was, is I'd like to be able to relax this major facility fee for all construction, whether it's new, recurrent, vacant lots, building lots, uh, let's just do a relaxation for the two-year window. So, it's going to benefit the whole community, every resident of the town, not just the perception of the building lots that are empty. And that was the intent when I brought this up, but the more input that I've received, I'd like to be able to help the whole community during this period of time. So, that's where I was leaning at. Is there any other discussion from the board on this, good, bad, indifferent?
Your relaxation, you're speaking specifically about residential.
I would think residential and new construction, current, current commercial properties that are out there.
Because I know in your comments, you were talking about basically over the past years, there's been very little, uh, as far as new construction with residents, but basically commercials really haven't suffered. I mean, you see the Wawa going up in dollars, but that still doesn't improve the fact that you can't include them all. That is just a fact that I noticed.
We have had, uh, we've had two residential houses built, I think, last year, but we, we were very fortunate, we had the construction of Wawa, I think, car dealership, and, uh, the dentist's office, I think, is going up now on Route 40, so there is a few. So, I, I just want to get some feedback from the board on if they would support, I guess, one, whether they'll support this waiver of major facility fees, and two, should we include everything, or even as you're commenting, maybe we take out the new construction, the new construction and commercial?
Just bring it up. Would you want the new construction being involved, that would bring more businesses to the town, it's true, most opportunity to feel as though they're getting a break from the start, so.
I agree with that as well. And also, the residential, uh, I'll just take, for instance, my neighborhood, but I know there's a few, there's five town, or houses that are town in one county, and then town, if they have the opportunity to come into town, I know they would like that, and I've had a couple people ask me if we were going to include that one part of the residential.
If they were connected to our system already, wouldn't you get a mix of, uh?
No, I'm saying the county houses.
No, I mean, they're, we supply, we're in charge of the county.
Oh, but, but if they were.
You're saying people that might want to hook up and, but don't do it because of the vote?
Right.
Even if it involves ventilation or not?
Right.
I had, I had a question from one of my neighbors, um, they've been, they were one of the first houses that was constructed on Whitehall Road, and it's been over forty, forty years now. They have a water hookup. Uh, is that, uh, sewer, uh, sewer, they want, uh, sewer there, they have the sewer, but they want to get hooked up to the water. Now, they're already in town limits, but they have a well in there, they want to get rid of that. Is there any way of grandfathering that, um, to ones that have been forty or fifty years into the town limits, but yet they have the well that maybe?
Well, it's in law states now, they want to connect the store, they, I mean, what are they, pay five thousand dollars, major facility fee? The board waives all the major facility fees, they wouldn't apply to anybody.
But all the construction costs on, on any project is.
Oh, yeah, they have to, they have to do that, we don't build their, we don't build the distribution system.
And I think that, that needs to be very clear, that with any construction, whether it's a, a new house, or, or a commercial building, a new hotel, uh, whatever it may be, they still pay for their infrastructure, they pay for their front foot assessment fees, there's a lot of fees associated with, uh, doing business with us. What we're doing would be giving them a relaxation on that hookup fee. And, uh, if they need water and sewer, it would be a total amount of fifteen thousand dollars, and in the case that you were just saying with the folks that are on Whitehall now that would like to hook in, they still have to pay for their lateral to hook in.
So, it's very clear, um, I think there were lines like eight or ten feet from the house right now, that runs right by, but they never hooked into it.
Yep.
So, they would pay.
They would pay the cost of that.
And even though, would they still be charged the fifteen thousand?
No.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm trying to create.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm.
They would pay to run the line.
Okay, got you.
They would pay to run the line, uh, connect to that eight feet, and then they would have to pay five thousand dollars, is what I need to make, is what we clear. So, I guess my comment is a board kind of supportive of relaxing, uh, the way it's written now, but with the amendment of including everything. Where there's no major facility fees in Elton for two years, no matter what the construction type, whether it's new, existing, connecting into a county home that needs water or sewer, I just need, we just need to give Louis some direction to put this together.
I would insert language that be residential and non-residential, that would include governmental, institutional, and commercial altogether.
The, uh, after this was placed in the newspaper, uh, two weeks ago about us considering this, I did receive a call from Chris Moyer from the Economic Development, and it was a long-winded voicemail that I didn't delete, uh, but it was, uh, very positive that he thought this was a fantastic step, in the right direction to stimulate, uh, construction in our community, and, uh, it was, uh, kudos. And I think that we also noticed that the county, uh, is moving toward, they're only going to do a reduction, a reduction in fees. I, I would hope that, uh, we would be selling more building permits than we could handle, but I still, I'm not sure how much this will help. I don't, I don't see it hurting anything, but I don't know how much it's going to help to stimulate, but if we can stimulate more growth than what we've had, I think it's going to help Elton in the long term. So, support, I guess.
I guess, I guess it would help stimulate, uh, growth, and due to the fact that, I know when Earl and I, when we campaigned, and we walked around and saw so many homes that we were foreclosed and vacant, so this can't hurt, it can only help, and sort of stimulus, so.
Lou, you got your walking papers? I mean, your, uh. All right. I'm going. All right, thank you, Lou. So, we're going to bring that up for, uh, next Wednesday, we're going to, uh, bring it up for introduction. Anything else, Lou? That's it? Very good. Uh, I had a few handful of things here in front of me. The first thing is I cannot attend, I cannot attend the Will Matco meeting tomorrow night. Is there anyone on this board that could serve for me at six-thirty on the Will Matco board? Think about it, and if you can, I'll be happy to give you this folder to serve, tomorrow night at six-thirty in Newark, Delaware. There's not much on the agenda, there's, uh, three line items, uh, but normally, uh, the last one I went to had like thirteen line items, and it took like ten hours, uh, this one will probably take about an hour, possibly an hour. So, I'll have this here, if anyone up in the tent, please let me know. Michelle, I received a, a email from Stephanie, uh, in regards to the MML dinner on July 20th, so I just want to remind the board on July 20th, we have a chapter meeting, it's going to be hosted by the Town of Northeast, everything looks great on the agenda, everything appears to be fine on that. Also, uh, we received the mayor commissioners, we received a thank you card, and I'll read it out, it said, "The residents of the villas at Whitehall would like to express our thanks for completing the sidewalk on Whitehall. Safety is a priority, priority for all people who walk along this road, and you have provided safety for all. Thanks again," it's signed by all the residents of that neighborhood.
That is very, very nice.
So, it was, uh.
Yep.
And they are really using that eyeball.
They certainly are. Uh, I also wanted to mention to, uh, our residents of our town and our, and our town board, uh, on Sunday, July 16th, which is this Sunday, at seven P.M., we're doing, uh, another video for the Town of Elton, and we're going to invite, we'd like to invite as many people, Mary Jo, I believe it's in downtown again?
Yeah.
It'll be in downtown for the group shot. Uh, anyone that was part of the first video that we did, I think, uh, it was a wonderful lot of excitement. Uh, this one, uh, that we're doing now has a little bit different spin, uh, on the Town of Elton, and I think everyone's going to love it, uh, but, uh, the more people that can attend, uh, the better it'll look in the video, so I will certainly be there on July 16th, it'll be right down here on North Street, so hopefully everyone can attend, uh, for the film.
If you see it on our Facebook, please share with your friends, so more people will know about it.
Very good. And, uh, right now, I have a certificate of special recognition I'd like to, uh, present to Ms. Laura Handley. Laura, can you come up and, uh, I'd like to, uh. We'd like to present Laura, and I'm going to read it, "Be it known that on behalf of the mayor commissioners and citizens of Elton, in recognition of your dedication and service to our community by volunteering countless hours decorating for Independence Day, Christmas, and other town events, we hereby recognize you with this certificate of recognition, signed by all of, myself and the commissioners." But we'd love to get you to hold this, and we'll let you picture.
We have to all line up.
We're all going to line up?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Smile, smile real big.
Right.
Hang on. Let's look at Brad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
And I have to say, Laura is always there at last minute notice when you need her. Fourth of July, we, I called Dan, our public works director, and said, "Get me Mrs. Handley on the phone," and she was right there with her family that helps her, um, and we really, really appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Because thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, I think that's all that I had, it seemed like we were, uh, going for quite a long time, but that's all I had to report. Gene, you have some items?
No.
Charles?
Louis, I see that Dan, or you or someone is working on the sidewalk on Howard Street, going to mall, the same as this.
The sidewalk crew removed the concrete late in March today, go for tomorrow.
Okay.
Friday?
Yeah, I like.
And the police department chief on, 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 on their behalf, thank you for closing out the, uh, shed robbers. I know you're going to be plucking equipment, you might call them all we hear, and then.
I can't believe they found that ring.
Girl. Oh.
Anything else, Charles?
That's it.
I just wanted to say, uh, the basketball camp's gone well, it started Monday, and it's just for four days, but, uh, that's for the younger, younger group, and next week's an older group, and over forty-three, uh, just, I'm saying, summer camp's going great down in Park and Rec, down in, uh, Meadow Park, so things looking good for the recreation department. And thanks to the police department for our works, the public work, all the, uh, people that helped, uh, the Parks and Rec Department, and it was a wonderful event, you guys have been great, sorry, great time.
Did we have, I'm sorry, did we have an estimate on how many people, you think, I think you said there's eight to, eight hundred to a thousand cars in the park?
Uh, it's, yeah, uh, very high fault, and that's kind of our best estimate.
Very good, so in the surrounding areas, we probably?
Oh, yeah, there was cars, uh, up to our avenue, Whitehall Road, and, uh, back in the neighborhoods along Howard Street, High Street, Main Street, so, uh, I guess there's two thousand people there, easy.
In the park, yeah. Very good. Mary Jo?
Um, I just wanted to mention, um, our musical meeting series downtown is supposed to start tomorrow, but it was canceled along with the dog days, days of summer, because it's going to be in one of those dog days, so, the heat, um, so it'll start next Thursday, and it has been rescheduled to August 10th, the dog days, so, um, that'll be out on Facebook. If anyone's noticed, there's been several new businesses opening up, um, Cullen Furniture's did open, uh, we'll be there having a brand opening when they're really ready, because they're still building furniture and putting things out. Um, they're very nice people that are in there, they are part of Cullen Brothers in Wilmington. Los Parientes, I don't know if I said that right, but they opened in the Bifood Lion. Uh, the Goodest New Shop has moved from the basement in the uptown center to right here on North Street, and if you haven't been in there, stop in, it's Wednesday to Saturday, ten to two, and it looks beautiful in there, they've done a great, great job. And Brookbend Interiors, which is what everyone is waiting for, um, they're planning the last week of July, and the furniture they're making is incredible. They made a chandelier, that chandelier outside is a ladder, I mean, but, uh, so, there's some things happening, so we're happy about that. And I also wanted to thank police, public works, uh, department of Parks and Rec for the Fourth of July, they did a great job.
Thank you. Very good. This is the, uh, time to open up the floor for the public to have something to say, and sir, I know you was the one to come up, to come on up and have a seat and sign in and tell us what, uh. Yes, yeah, sit down and, uh, sign in and, and tell us.
Sign in.
Perfect, and tell us what you're here for, and who you are, and.
Wonderful, wonderful. Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for having me here today, uh, my name is Dr. Bobby Salabine, I'm one of the dentists at Alpha Dental Health Center, uh, actually Alpha Health Center, we operate the dental practice at that center. I'm here today to do two things, number one, introduce myself and let you know what our intentions are for the community and some things we have planned, and also to, um, come to a resolution with some grievances that we've been, uh, having to deal with. To tell you a little about myself, I was born in Iran, and we fled the country when the cleric started murdering my family, and we were refugees in Germany. We moved here in eighty-nine, and with five hundred dollars, we didn't have anything, and so, through hard work and a lot of trial and tribulations, um, I was able to put myself through Howard Dental School, Howard University College of Dentistry in D.C. The upbringing that we had, it taught me a lot, it taught me what it means to live without, it taught me what it means to live with. Having lived without, one of the things that I promised God, and I promised myself, I promised my mom above all, because she's going to snipe me if I don't follow through my response, is to give back to the community. One of the things that we have planned for the, the Town of Elton is we want to do a, kind of like a give kids a smile type program, where you go through different schools and bring in the kids, and do some dental screenings, uh, some cleanings possibly, um, and, um, things of that nature to really give back, because a lot of these children have, there's a doubt they don't care for their lives, and we want to make sure we get, have them give access to such don't care. We opened about a month ago, and so we're still working on our kinks with everything, and so, uh, once we have our grand opening, I'd be honored to invite everyone here to our grand opening, we're going to have some wine and cheese, just want to make sure that the wine is legal before we start offering it, so start it out there. But everyone has to know, like I said, that we'd be honored to have you there for our grand opening when we, we're settled in. So, that's a little bit about us, about our practice, we're about eight thousand square foot practice, we have twenty orbitories, ten chairs right now, and we're getting about ten orthodontic chairs, so we're going to be doing a lot of work. Um, the, uh, there's an OB-GYN in that center, it's the only OB-GYN in the three county radius, and we have a lot of pregnant ladies that come through, um, do male and healthy smiles that need a lot of dental work, um, that we're able to provide them. Caveat is that they have to receive their dental care before they get birthed, and so we're looking to practice, helping a lot of our patients to get their work done and approved and, and authorized, so that, you know, they don't have to spend fifty thousand dollars on their mouth when they can be buying love groceries, diapers, things that matter. That's a little about myself and about our practice, um, Dr. Scar, he's, he's my mentor, he's been in practice for over twenty-five years, unfortunately, he's been making it today, he wanted me to give his condolences and say hello to everyone. He, um, you know, a wonderful man, he taught me a lot, um, he and I are going to be running the show there, his wife, Dr. Ovacy, is an orthodontist, she's going to be coming in, and she's going to be handling the orthodontic side of things as well, so we're going to be one-stop shop hopefully in the next five years, I want to turn into a multi-specialty group practice. The second reason why I'm here today is, um, it's not as much of a pleasant note, unfortunately, but I just want to bring it to this council attention. Yesterday, I was in the middle of a procedure when a Mr. Griff Ellison, the building instructor, came by. He came in with a very intimidating demeanor, and he demanded to speak to me, and so, obliging to his request, I left two patients in my dental chair to go see what he wanted to address. Now, I don't know if you've ever been to the dentist, but it's not a fun place to be, I know you, everyone that comes in wants to get in and get out, um, and so, you know, to accommodate him, I pulled him to the office and asked him what he was here for. So, he said that we weren't in compliance with some of the ordinances, permits that, that, um, he wanted to address, and, and so, the way, give a little background, we, this practice has been there for at least two years. Mr. Mohammed, uh, the brother of the owner, built the practice, and he has all the permits in, in place, I mean, he had to build it, you know? There was a, the half of the practice was previously occupied by a previous tenant that was running a salon, and we accommodated them by letting them stay on, and, but up until this, up until this past, uh, I believe Tuesday, um, we let, we had to let them go because, you know, we need the space to bring in our orthodontic chairs. And so, when Mr. Ellison came into the office, um, he started walking through, and it almost felt like he was cherry picking things that, that I had no idea we weren't in compliance on. One of the things that he brought to our attention was that the, we, we didn't have the safety lights, we have, we had a safety light, that, uh, and then the, the light itself right next to it, very similar to that, the one didn't have the button where you could push the safety light on, but the other did, and so, we're pushing all the buttons, I'll push through, and everything was working. The fire marshal came in and gave us our, our certificate of occupancy, okay? Not only that, prior to that, there was a business that was there, they, they had their own certificate of occupancy, so I was confused as to why these issues were being addressed now when we were in compliance with the fire marshal. Secondly, he came out and he said that, um, the hair sinks to the previous salon, the previous tenant, um, didn't have permits for them. We didn't have nothing to do with that business, you know, they installed it, we didn't have anything to do with the construction there, um, and they said that we need to have the permits for those hair sinks. Now, another thing that he brought to our attention was that we have a, what's called a 3D comb machine, Steve Only Machine in Cecil County, um, that takes 3D, for the vessel biology, that takes 3D images of your jaw, and it's the new standard of care, cutting waves, cutting waveless technology for implant placements, diagnosing, uh, root canal treatment, things of that nature, um, and, and the reason why we got this machine is because we want to provide the best standard of care to the people of Elton, okay? Not many dentists provide this, it's a hundred twenty thousand dollar machine, it's a very expensive machine to have, but we, we always want to do right for our people, I always stand by my work, I don't like to cut corners, I want to make sure we do a good job for everyone that walks into that office. He mentioned to us that the, uh, the electrical permitting was not, uh, up to date, uh, and that we needed to provide the permitting for that. Now, I don't understand what he's talking about, because what it is, is it's a plug like this, we plug it into a transformer, and the transformer feeds into the machine. So, I don't know why if we have to have a permit for a transformer to run that machine, we didn't know electrical work, and he said that we need to have a permit for that, we need to have a permit for the hair sinks and for the lights, which I don't know what's going on, and then for the plumbing as well, for all the chairs. So, when I talked to Mr. Mohammed, he said that he had the permits with his, with the town and, and registered, um, and one of the things he said to me was, "We need to have this done by Friday or else." I didn't ask why or else, you know, but his, his demeanor was very intimidating, and I'm assuming he's going to shut us down, and so, when I asked him, I was like, you know, I understand what you're asking of us, I have no problem coming into compliance with everything you're asking, could you please provide us with more time so that we can come into compliance? He looked at me, and he laughed, and he said, "I'd have to check with my heart outs, and I'll get back to you." I provided him with my cellphone, and he never reached back to us. And so, you know, if you're going to, if you're, I'm a man of my word, if you're going to do something, I expect you to do it, you know what I mean? If I, if I say I want to do something, I want to do it, you know? And so, you know, with, and he gave us till Friday, and you know, I don't, I, you know, there's a right way of doing business, and there's a wrong way of doing business, it's not proper, if I'm in, interrupted that, a doctor who needs an millimeter procedure, treating a patient, healing a patient, pull him aside and to run through these gamut of trade fake patterns that I feel like we're in compliance with. Another thing he said is, "We need, we need to have the permits for the X-ray machines." All of our permits are registered with the state, we're in compliance. I'm here today to ask for a time so that we can, number one, provide you with anything and anything that you need. you with anything and anything that you need so that we can make sure that we're up to date with everything. And number two, to get a list of, of things that you guys need, formal list so we can address these things. You know, it's, it's one thing to come in and just read off something and, and click things. And then it's another thing to, give me a formal list. Give me some time to comply. This, this business has been there for two years. You know, all of permits from my understanding were there. You know, it's, we have to work with the, the landlord to get these things up to date, you know? And to put a gun to our head and say or else until Friday, you know, it's, it's really, it left a really bad taste in my mouth, to be honest with you. You know, especially when he's threatening to close me down and I have pregnant ladies that are on a time-sensitive treatment plan that need to get this work done. You know, I don't know if you have children or not, but it costs money to raise a child. And I don't want these patients to suffer, number one, for pain. And number two, to be closed down because, you know, I didn't have the time to follow up on, on your requests. So, I'm here to ask formally for a request of anything that you need of us. And please give us, or raise a lot of time to get these things into compliance because, you know, we're not here to cut corners. We're going to be up to date with everything. And we're here to give back. You know, we really generally want to give back to this community. And, you know, like I said, once we're up to date and once we're running, I'd love to have you guys for a wedding ceremony, for a grand opening party. I'd be honored to, you know, chit chat and, and, and get to know each one of you individually better at that time as well. And so, that being said, I've got nothing else to say, but thank you so much for the time and for letting me speak here today.
Well, listen, thank you so much for coming in and it will be addressed. And you've got the top man of the company here.
How much time do you think you need to, you want to get a formal list?
It depends on the list. And because, you know, requesting things from the city, requesting things from the owners, there's a lot of back and forth, you know? You know, right now, the, the owner of the building is going through some problems, I'm sure you all know. And so, they're dealing with that. And, and so, we don't have, we don't have these permits that they need. I talk to the, the people that do, see what the turnaround time is. So, to be honest with you, I don't know what that answers. But to give me three days for, for, excuse me, four days for Friday, you know, it's almost like, let's be real here, you know, it's ridiculous, you know?
Bill, the town of Elton welcomes you.
Well, thank you very much.
And we'll work with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's coming from the town minister.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. I'll let you.
And you're on it, Lou.
I'm on it.
All right, very good.
All right. Thank you so much. Do you need anything else of me?
Well, I do have this little cat.
Come on in. We'll take care of it.
The dental monitor.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you. We'll make it fun for you. Thank you so much for your time. I need a drive back to DC. And so, with that being said, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a call and I'll leave you with my cellphone number. I'm sorry I didn't bring any business cards with me. I was in a rush to get here. I didn't want to miss this meeting. But thank you very much for your time.
I can say he did stay from work just to come to this meeting. And he told me he's leaving from DC or, he, he didn't tell me. But I was surprised to see him here. But I really welcome you.
Thank you so much. Just one thing I want to ask. When I start planning this community service, I, and I need to get in touch with the local schools and whatnot, who would be the best point of contact to arrange that so that I can work on it and...
I can. And that's a good idea because I met her up at the town since the state and there was a dentist that came in and went through the kids' mouths. Wasn't all the classes, because kids don't get dental care.
Sure.
And they were just going through the process.
You know, and it's unfortunate because, you know, you know, growing up without, I know what it was like. And I don't want to have these kids go through what I had to go through. You know, I promised myself and I promised myself well, my mother and God, that I would always give back. And now that I'm in a position to do so, you know, I feel like this is right now would be needed for me to do so.
Well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
And I'll be the one to help with your grand opening.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Wonderful. A pleasure to meet everybody. Thank you. Thank you.
Lou, do you have a card there?
Yes, here. Here's a card.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
That's your link.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you as well.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Down to DC.
Thank you, thank you. Y'all have a wonderful day. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else have something to say? Come on down, Mr. Ed Kender. I guess we have an announcement tonight.
Ed Kender, ninety-eight hundred place. In reference to your major facilities, the board may want to consider an only new construction, not accessory use. You may have a lot of influx of people coming in when you turn a garage into an apartment. You may want to consider that.
They would still have to get a, an exception through the Board of Appeals to get the accessory use on that exception.
Have to be setback requirement, lots on coverage, things like that. But it's something to consider. There may be a lot of people, well, if I can wait fifteen thousand dollars to reach facility, I'm going to turn my garage in an apartment or apartment and raise, raise money. Yeah, it's an income. So, it's something they want to consider, look at strictly new construction.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Mr. Ron, come on down, sir.
I'm trying to find the paper. We ain't got the mail from the town. I'm always excited.
Pull it up to you, Mr. Ron.
We ain't...
Pull the mic up to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Important message regarding your mail delivery. And that's not really what it's about. It's not the mail delivery, other than the area has to be cleared from trash cans and debris and so forth, which is understandable for safety of the mail person. On Douglas Street, I have, I have in my phone ten pictures of where the trash is supposed to be. I live at two forty-two. I got more trash cans on that rural pad than almost what's in Douglas Village. Consequently, flies galore. And these people, you understand what I mean? It, it gets a thing for bringing basketball. Some of them could across the street. I've seen that. You know, sort of a bag. If they give baskets, fine. If they don't, doesn't matter. Trash all over the place, bombs, this, that and the other. You know? It, there needs to be some control on that. You understand what I mean? I mean, my daughter, who has MS, she's forty-seven years old, and I defy anyone to say she does, she lines those cans up. She don't do it. You understand? To look presentable.
Are they using trash cans or not using them?
Well, some do and some don't. Some do and some don't.
What's the day of your trash pickup?
Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, I mean, Monday. And of course, and they got furniture out there, you know what I mean? People move out, down the street and they carry, they carry stuff down to where, well, I don't understand that.
So, you think that's what you're doing? They're, they're definitely bringing it down from...
Well, I know it. I don't make accusations or any anecdotes that aren't true. But I don't, never did do that. That was one thing. The other thing is, I went to the, I went to the Fourth of July and I had a good time. I was very surprised because I was lucky I was there. First of all, you know, because of my stroke and what happened. But, and I noticed cars were coming in and starting with people and so forth. And at least, I'll say at least ten of those cars had Delaware tags, New Jersey tags, a couple of from Virginia, and Alabama.
Wow.
They said, man, they come all the way from Alabama with these people? And I said, no, they live here. There are so many cars out there that people have been living here for up to five years plus. Hey? It's against the law.
It is.
They make laws, but they don't, they don't abide by the law. They don't enforce the law. What's wrong with that picture? I mean, Ron, all due respect, right over where you live. I know, I know, I know that neighborhood. Not only yours, mine, and I just know this town because I get around the property as much, not more than most of you. And it's not being nosy. I'm just telling what you know. Everybody knows, I guess.
Well, I would like to address that with you, Ron. Listen, at the, at our last landlord meeting, we, the town of Elton is probably closer to sixty percent rentals today, forty percent homeownership. But we have a large amount of rental property. We've asked the landlords and for them to work their properties for us and provide us a list of the non-compliance tags. And I think at the last landlord's meeting, we received, I think there was two or three lists that came in, which were a large amount of vehicles that were, had not Maryland tags. And we hit them pretty hard. That was two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Yeah.
Whatever our last landlord meeting was.
Right. And we, we, we try to do it twice a year where we'll pick different neighborhoods and tag the vehicles without state tags.
But this was a big step, getting the landlords to help us with the tax situation and bringing that information.
People don't abide or cooperate. It was made, which it's not, but it is hypothetically. They should be fined. They should be, I don't care who it is. When I first moved to this state, almost before you was born, okay, it was thirty days. Your man never, the next day, you know what I mean? I know. They have them right on the fair end. Came out to my house and said, man, you've been there more than thirty days. Then off goes the car. You know what's the state of Maryland is losing because of the taxes that they don't have to pay?
It's a ton of money.
And they're crying about wanting more money. Why don't they take care of their business? You understand what I mean? And if that sounds belligerent, it isn't meant to be. It's just a fact. You know, I've stated over and over again about ten. I lived in the hood. I don't care who knows it. In Detroit, I lived on the block, thirteen hundred bobin', as police headquarters. I knew it by heart as a kid. So, I know. But it, it's unreal. But people are... I don't drive, I drive the speed limit. I don't exceed it. I'm a courteous driver. Mr. George here, one time he turned a corner and stopped. I don't know if you remember, but he stopped and he said, I appreciate you letting me go. Real gentleman. I'll never forget that. I don't know if you remember, but I do.
Very good.
Okay? That makes me feel good, you know? And the last thing is parking. There we go. In Winter Village, they got handicap parking. They have to go through all that preliminary for whatever reason that is, to put their hands in parking spaces in for those that are handicapped. Now, people don't know and realize that. You know, I had, I had the stroke. My doctor has ordered me out and I have to start using a wheelchair. And I'm scared to death of that.
Do you have a handicap sticker?
I do. I do. I come down Locust Lane. I don't drive the speed limit. It's twenty-five. I think you should be like in the park, ten. You've got fifteen hundred kids in there. Not that many. But you know what I'm talking about? And somebody passed me on the, on the right-hand side, went up on the curb just to get around me. And it's not, it's an everyday thing, you know? I, I wake up in the morning and it's like ground all day. Think about that. It's the same old, same old, same old every day. When do things change? What are you going to have to do to come? I, I, I don't understand it. I tried to be an upstanding man. I was a wild kid. That's in the past, you know? I had, I don't know how many DUIs. Look on my record now, I guarantee you, I got a lot from the state of an expungement. And I had over fifteen DUIs.
Very good.
But not for almost forty years it took me to get that. Forty years.
Very good.
I'm running out of air, brother. And it's not a good thing.
Thank you, Ron.
I appreciate what the town is doing, the best of its ability. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Kraus. Mayor Kraus. Delicate Kraus.
President Kraus.
Old geezer Kraus.
Excuse me. First of all, I apologize because I came only for entertainment. I wasn't willing to take up your time. However...
You can bring up the other issue if you like. It's up to you.
Oh, well...
There's no need to.
Look for your guidance. A couple of things, you know, you, this gentleman, Charis, is, when he, he was, came to this community, well, when I came to there, he talked about, you know, his son being a resident and he's a good resident, obviously as a participant. You know, but when I came to this town, I was only a twinkle in four of your eyes, your father's eyes, you know? You're all much younger than I am. However, there's one of you members sitting up there that at least occupied the same year. And there's another gentleman sitting across from me over there that was here back the same time too. However, I'm going to try to pass along some old wisdom here. You know, I listened to, I read, all I read on the deferment of the hookup fees, okay, is what I read in the article in the paper. And I have to say that, you know, in reading it, I kind of thought I got the message, understood totally the intent. I would encourage though, the whole philosophy of keeping it simple. I think it would become an administrative nightmare to worry about all the various things to do. Everything you would be doing is going to add a tax revenue to the town as well as, and I'm just thinking, how in the world would Louis's office, I know Louis would be able to handle it, but you're going to do a start date. I assume that the, the resolution ordinance, you know, has a date, it would start effective, you know, your intention would be to put it in. A date it would end, you know? So, you're looking at a twenty-four month period. You said two years. But I would simply just, you know, forgive it. It's, it's, it's an incentive to get people to build homes. I would pretend anything I had thought is just on the ending. You don't want somebody coming in for nothing at all and taking fifty building permits or, you understand what I'm saying? But to say if it's somebody adding on... But to say if it's somebody adding on a room, that's going to be a building permit, it's going to be a change in the assessment, it's going to be more taxes for the town. But it's also going to create, hopefully, housing for younger couples who today aren't afford to get, they don't, they can't, they don't have the money to buy housing. And they need more affordable housing, so I would, I would like to encourage the town to encourage the people who want to build in this community to build something affordable because we're getting some jobs now. Jobs, get houses, build families, you know, and and build a much better community and not, we don't have a great community, but we need to give the the younger people a chance to have a home and 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 I I would just encourage you, when I say keep it simple, I mean, you know, there are many good examples were made about what if this, what if that, what if it's a General Motors plant? Well, they're they're not built near any, they're built somewhere overseas, but but my point simply is, Rob, is, is I think that that I don't know what I'm getting that stare across from me, but I I just think it could be an approval nightmare. You know, if you had this one that got this way and so forth, anything you're doing, you're making improvements to the town, but also hopefully the people that are getting the home, getting the addition, getting the improvements will benefit from and that's certainly reaching out to the community. So the old wise man says, just keep it simple.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Come on down.
I missed a couple of meetings, I'm telling you.
Yes, you did.
I'm really sad about that, it's too much fun to be here. Um, I missed a few meetings because I was a teen hall coach for three year olds. If you've never done it, I highly recommend not doing it. It's kind of like her and squirrel, so I mean, I forewarn you. But I bring that up because um it's great what the Parks and Rec are doing, they have so many programs, especially for little guys and I have a little guy. Um, so I want to give a big shout out to the Parks and Rec, they do a wonderful job and we participate in as much of that as possible. I want to thank Dan for reaching out to me to let me know that we're getting dumpsters again. Yay, Holly Thrive Manor. I'd like to see if we could get one of those letters that you sent out to the Park Circle crowd about not dumping in our medians. I drive past trash every day. It's horrible, they can't mow the the median there on Calene without mowing around somebody's old bed frame and an old tube television and the debris, the brush that is being dumped in my neighborhood. Is there any way we can get one of those wonderful letters?
I'm going to interrupt you, I think it would be great to write a letter in regards to that because it's been very successful in Park Circle uh around the park, if anyone takes a ride through there now, if look, you can see the grass growing very nicely. It looks great. So Lou, do your magic and maybe address uh
There's uh quite a few letters.
I would say, I would think that we would, we would approach the ones maybe on the left side, I don't think we have to do everyone, I don't think.
I think you're going to find that you'll get a better result doing both
It's a lot of letters, I agree with Lou.
And Holly Thrive Manor. Well, I mean, you might even be able to send it more to landlords because I know our neighborhood is predominantly landlords and very few homeowners. I am a homeowner unfortunately sometimes, so I don't quite fall into the the majority. Um, but with the dumpster coming to our neighborhood, um, working with a couple of the ladies in our neighborhood again this time, we are going to do our community picnic and our goal is to focus on our park, we're going to attempt to clean up the um graffiti that's all over the park equipment, repaint the benches, replace the mulch underneath of the playground equipment, just make it a more happy place. If you're interested, it's the fifth, so we'll be doing a lunch around one o'clock, come out and join us. It's just hot dogs, but it'll still be fun, so come hang out with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say to this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.